Paul, thank you.
Chairman Cox?
Here.
Vice Chairman Raj Ratnam?
Here.
Commissioner Yates?
Here.
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Five present, we have four.
Do we have anybody on the phone yet?
Also, is the city attorney on?
Well, we might announce that he will be joining us.
Yes, Attorney for the City Lloyd Pilchun will be joining us over the phone.
Okay, Paul? I was gonna say, try the other one, or put them both together. For that soft voice. Okay, Paul. I'll rise, please.
Ready? Again? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
Second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I wasn't here last week, so I don't know if they were true or last month, I don't know if they're true or not, so.
So moved.
I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
I abstain.
Okay, Vice Chairman Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
We come to the public comment portion of our meeting on item six. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not appear or already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to Brown Act, the planning commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute time period. The public comments section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his name and his address. We will open up for public comment at this time on things that are not on the agenda. As I don't see a rush to the mic, we will close the public comments section of our agenda at 6:08 on the city's clock and move right into item seven. Public hearing, a site plan review seventeen dash oh nine, a request by the KBM Properties LLC and the Norma Ridgecrest Storage Partners for the property located at fourteen thirty North Norma Street, APN number four one nine dash zero two zero dash zero two, known as A American Self-Storage. On eighteen hundred and eight, eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two square foot lot proposed the construction for additional storage units and parking on this existing facility. I'll turn the time over to staff for staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a, the time and place for a public hearing, duly noticed and posted, a public hearing on this item. The applicant has requested what amounts to the completion of a three-phase project. He's looking at the third project, phase of the project to receive approval. Staff has received the application and it's, the application includes one hundred and seven new storage units and one large vehicle storage area in the center of the development. I'll show you a picture in a second. As was mentioned, the owners are Ken Properties. It's again located on North Norma. You'll see a site plan for that as well. The current zoning is general commercial, so it's applicable. Again, this is an expansion of existing facility that already exists. So it is the north of Mission Bank land, which the council, our city council has asked me to have Saul, you abstain from the discussion on this item since you're adjacent to the, to the, to the building, and I would appreciate that. And, and-
But he's not the owner.
He's not the owner, but the attorney said because his building is adjacent to it, that he, he would, he would, as a planning commission, he recommended, at least, that he abstained from the discussion-
Okay, thank you.
-on this particular item. The, the site is, again, on Normans and Reeves. If you take a look at it, it's three point five five acres, actually, he said eighteen thousand feet. The total site is three point five five acres. The expansion is the eighteen thousand feet of that. Again, it's general commercial, so this is allowed use, permitted use. This is the site plan aerial that you notice. The existing storage facility is identified in this, in the lighter gray, and the new project area that they're planning to expand is in the, in the green, and it's off a graft. And Mission Bank is sitting right here on Norma in accordance graft to Norma. See if I get this thing to work for me. There we go. Again, just another parcel map identifying the location. It is, sometimes we call it a flag lot in the sense that it has a pole right here, as we call it, and then the flag, if you take a look at it. The outdoors, this is the proposed layout of the expansion. This, again, is storage units, the typical storage units you might think of, and probably seen several times in your lifetimes. And it goes all around the perimeter. Then there's a drive access area around the interior space, which they're, they're at least indicating or planning on using for RV storage on the inside. Again, this is a rendering of the building, a typical building that you might see. This is the existing site that's there now. For those of you who can reference this, this, again, looking on Norma, there's a small office building, then there's these storage facilities right off of Norma on the way-
Between Trelvolley Center.
Big Bird?
It's between Trelvolley Center.
Yeah, Trelvolley Center and Mission Bank. Gee, really that. So, again, the northeast expansion area and from the northern expansion area, again, there's a fence around it right now, and it's a dirt field at the moment. The, we have provided a resolution and recommendations in terms of conditions of approval. Let me go through those for you very quickly. Part of them are engineering standards, the others are, we call them findings, in the conditions of approval. The, I should probably mention, this site is, again, a categorical exemption. It's, it falls within the, the minimum, the maximum area, within the minimum area we're allowed, or maximum area, we're allowed to do a categorical exemption, sorry, existing buildings sitting in an existing area. And so, we're doing that on an environmental basis. The, under article, sequel article at nineteen, by the way. It's, it's, the, again, the conditions of approval essentially are to be set for twenty-four months, and unless the applicant receives an extension, they will expire at that date for a, for the resolution. Okay. I will go through a few of the conditions. I would probably ask the commission if they have any questions concerning this. The applicant, again, will require to do federal, state, and county regulations. Any signs, have to receive our standard permit process, additional signs or installation in accordance with sections of our chapter twenty. AC, AVs, ACs, which I don't anticipate, however, need to be screened from view. Dust mitigations and positive trash control need to be utilized during the construction of the project. Chapters twenty and twenty dash two two point one, parking lot lighting shall be provided for public safety. All outdoor lighting shall be directed downward and shielded. In accordance with chapter twenty and twenty dash two two, trash bins shall be provided. The applicant shall provide screened trash enclosures on the site. The applicant shall identify an existing proposed public right-of-ways within the subject property and shall meet drainage facilities in accordance with municipal code. In accordance with section twenty dash twenty-two, again, the applicant shall identify this percentage of area covered in buildings and meet, meet those requirements, and the Uniform Building Code shall comply with those as well. In accordance, again, with that chapter section, shall identify direct drainage flow with the slope and percentage on the site so that it can be retained and funneled in the appropriate method to our engineering department's needs. The applicant shall identify and provide driveway widths and off-site parking dimensions, individual lots, should he do that, spaces that meet our particular code sections and identify particular subsurface materials in accordance. If there's any landscaping on the site, he shall have to comply with landscaping areas required, square footage areas, proposed landscaping, final landscaping plans must be submitted for approval to the city planner. Landscaping shall be completed and signed up for the city planner prior to occupancy. Landscaping shall be maintained except as per the applicant shall apply. And the local landscaping shall exist, proposed trees, shrubs, and ground covers, they shall adhere to the Ridgecrest water efficiency landscape ordinance and use plans that are in that ordinance and are approved on the property, on the approved plant list from the Indianapolis Valley Water District. The others are material in accordance with the standards necessary for public safety, and we have, Lauren Kulp would like, do you have anything you'd like to add in your conditions on the engineering side, sir?
I believe all the conditions are included.
Yes, I believe they are as well. So, we, the staff's recommendation is to, after discussion and public comment, to recommend the approval of the resolution approving the site plan review for the, for the applicant with the conditions identified in it. And with that, sir, I'll turn it back to the chairman for discussion.
Thank you. I have some questions, both for staff and for the developer, but I'm gonna ask the commission if they have any other questions or comments at this time.
I cannot participate in the discussion, but just a couple of general questions can I ask?
Go ahead.
As a neighbor, Mission Bank, at least I did not see any notice to the neighbor about this project, so that's one thing. And then is the owner K E N Properties or KBM Properties?
KBM. According to your application.
KBM?
KBM.
It says KBM. It says K E N. We may have to change.
So we have a typo?
Yes. Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Is the, is the developer in the audience?
I am. I'm here on behalf of them.
On behalf of them, would you mind coming up to the mic, please? And so, these questions will also be for staff. I noticed in the conditions that are put here that we have dust mitigation. My concern is, you got a fence around it, but the entire land has been grubbed, and all the bushes and everything have been taken off from it, but you're asking for a three-phase development. And so, I'm wondering what your plan is for dust mitigation?
I don't know the details about that. As far as that, unfortunately, the person that was supposed to be here didn't make it, so I'm here kind of last minute, so I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. Lauren, do we, are we aware that it has already been grubbed with, prior to approval?
If I can clarify very quickly for the chairman, this is actually, this whole project is phase three of the project, so it's just one project.
Okay, that helps.
So I'm facing this, so. I'm sorry if I misled you on that.
Mr. Chairman, no, engineering department is not aware of any grading or clearing or grubbing of the site.
Okay. So there is a fence around it, but normally you'd put, like, the orange stuff to try and keep the dust down from the neighborhood, so I, I just wanted that to be aware. And then also, number nine in community development, in accordance with chapter twenty and twenty and twenty-two point two, the applicant shall identify the direction of the drainage and flow, the slope, and the percentage on the site. I didn't see any of that in the information. I don't see an onsite retention basin in the drawings that we have. And, and so, with the perimeter being lined with the units, and then they're using the interiors RV parking, have we discussed this with the developer and have we come to a conclusion on that?
Engineering staff, we have not had any communication with the applicant at this time.
But they're aware that they need to develop this, correct, under the conditions?
I believe that the applicant has been given a copy of the conditions well in advance of the planning commission meeting. There's been no questions of the applicant to staff, so I think, I think there has been adequate notification.
Okay. So that, that probably answers my questions. If you go into the engineering department, conditions of approval, two and three, construction of onsite stormwater drainage detention system for a ten-year event, and then three, a grading plan and permit will, will be required for control of wind-blown dust and sand during construction, RMCA chapter sixteen. So, I, I don't have a problem personally with the project. I would just like to make sure that they're not proceeding without meeting these types of conditions, and, and like to put it out to the commission and the public, that staff make sure that we're not going beyond our capability, maybe. That's, that's the only questions I have. Any other questions from the commissioners before I turn it over to the public?
Well, you make a good point, and I hadn't really thought about onsite retention. How does, how does that work when, if they're planning to basically pave the entire property?
They can do dry wells.
What is it?
They can do, what I call a dry well. Lauren has a technical name for it, but it's just a, a big hole full of rocks or something, and it drains into that.
Sometimes called a French drain, as well.
Interesting. Learn something new every day.
Very similar to a, a onsite wastewater disposal system where you have leach fields.
Okay.
Designed to the capacity of the amount of runoff that would occur there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? I'll now turn it over to the public if there's public comment on this particular project.
Yep.
Can I just say it rather loudly, could you all hear me?
Sure.
The person to the chair, when you said the city council had asked Commissioner Raj Ratnam not to, not to talk, I think it was not C O U N C I L.
Correct.
C O U N S E.
I should have added legal counsel. City legal counsel, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that was a big agreement.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, any other public comment? If no public comments, we'll close this. I'll entertain a motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution seventeen dash fifteen, as written, with the conditions written.
I so move.
I'll second. I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Raj Ratnam?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, do we have our attorney here?
Yes, sir, I am here. Lloyd Pilchun.
Okay, I was just wondering whether I needed to push this back a little bit. Okay, so we'll move into the A portion, amended tentative parcel map, TPM one one seven nine Z, or a commercial parcel map to include four parcels and sump, lot A, and twenty-nine acres to facilitate Walmart Supercenter, and three future lots on the southeast corner of China Lake Boulevard and Bowman Road. Staff report?
Yes, Chairman, this, again, is the time and place for a duly authored, a duly noticed public hearing for this particular item. We, it's a, it is a resolution to amend an existing tentative parcel map, relative to conditions associated with the, sometimes called the Walmart Supercenter project, which is a twenty-nine acre, point-two acre project consisting of four parcels, again, at the north-southeast corner of South China Lake and Bowman. We have, I would like to, before I get too far into the staff report, I'm going to ask our city attorney, who was instrumental in helping us put the staff report together, to perhaps comment on this, on the staff report and provide information relative to it, as it is a particular necessity in order for the resolution, for the planning commission to approve this resolution, to allow, allow the item to move forward to city council with your recommendation, or, or non, I guess, for action relative to approving a final map, so that the parcels in front of, the goal is that the parcels in front of the existing Ridgecrest project would be allowable to be sold and developed once the final map is approved. And with that, I'll let, and forgive me Lloyd, if I use your first name, comment on this.
Please do.
Go ahead and make a comment on the staff report for the planning commission, please.
You bet. Okay, so this is Lloyd Pilchun with the city attorney's office. So, as Mr. Parsons said, this is a previously approved tentative parcel map, and because when a, when the final parcel map is, before the final parcel map can be recorded, it must show that it was, that it complied with all conditions of the tentative parcel map. So the situation that we were faced with was that this project evolved after the tentative parcel map was approved, and I believe it was largely due to the city being unable to, lacking the funds to pay for some of the improvements that were, that had been agreed to between the city and the developer. So several of those conditions of approval changed, or were dropped, or, or scaled back. They are listed in our resolution before you this evening, they're listed in, in exhibit A, the last page of the resolution. So the mechanism that the State Subdivision Map Act provides for, and that the Ridgecrest Municipal Code provides for, is an amended map. And with that, the circumstance that, when, when, when an amended map is called for, is when, let's see, the language is, there are changes in circumstances which make any or all of the conditions of the prior map no longer appropriate or necessary. So the whole point of this amended map is, it's a modification that deals with conditions that are being taken away, that are conditions that are no longer appropriate or necessary. I'll just remind the commission that this is not revisiting the entire tentative, it's not reopening the tentative parcel map case, because that's an entitlement that was approved. So rather, what this is about is removing conditions that had been previously approved. And as I said, they are listed in exhibit A to this resolution, and I'm available for any other questions you have.
And Lloyd, we have those up on the screen, so we, we produce them.
Thank you.
Is that the end of staff report?
Yes, sir, that is. Staff, well, I should say, staff is recommending approval of the, of the resolution as submitted.
Any questions from the commissioners? I have a couple for the attorney.
Please.
A question I have, I, I understand, when I first received the, the report, it was so busy, it was hard to get my hand around it, and I got quite a bit of clarification from our city engineer and, and from Gary. The question I have in relationship to this, I understand that the city didn't have enough money to meet its obligation with Walmart, and some of the extension to this project was scaled back, and in order for Lauren to approve it, we have to identify that, and that's what this document is. The question I have for you is, in this process, and it's kind of twofold, I want to read you a couple of things, is, do we have the ability in this particular forum, or on this particular resolution, to put conditions on it? And the reason I ask that is, in two thousand nine, on, on the tentative parcel map eleven seven ninety, which we're talking about, when we come down to condition D, approved by the planning commission, and then we go to D three, it says, "not to conflict with easements acquired with public, public at large for access through or use of property within the adjacent to proposed subdivision." So, my concern is, is that Walmart has made it perfectly clear that they don't want any easement or access through their property, but yet that was the condition, excuse me, of Resolution zero nine dash one eight, and, and yet, they're denying the property owners around them that access through easement. And I'm, I'm wondering, can we condition the approval of this to where they're, they need to provide access through easement on these properties? So I'll turn it to you, Lloyd.
Okay. First, Commissioner, could you, I have Resolution oh nine one eight in front of me. Could you repeat where, point me to that condition that you were just reading about the easement?
If you come down to D, D, number three. This is not to conflict with easements acquired by the public at large for access through or use of property within the adjacent or proposed subdivisions.
Okay. So that is a finding that does come straight out of the State Map Act, and what that is describing is that, it's describing an existing easement that's a public easement, such as a road. A road is a public easement. So the, the finding that is being made there in letter D, like dog, number three, is that the, approving body, the planning commission, is finding that the design of this proposed subdivision will not conflict with an existing, say, road, or an easement for the, of the public. So that's really what that one deals with. I'm not aware that there, you mentioned something about adjacent properties, but I'm not sure if you, if I followed you, that, is there an actual public easement that runs through the, within the borders of the parcel map?
Well, if you were, you know, I guess you're gonna have to define for me, does it have to be a dedicated road, because there's actually roads that terminate at the Walmart Block Wall, running north and south. And, and so, but I'm, I'm confused with the language that says, "property within," or "adjacent to," so we don't want it to conflict, then it goes down to E, and it says, "the proposal conforms with the requirements of chapter nineteen and twenty of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code." So if we go in the general plan in the municipal code, we're really not supposed to create something that does harm to adjacent properties.
Mm-hmm. Well, let me just say, I, I, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, no, you're, you're fine. I'm, I'm trying to look for direction here, because here's my concern. If we approve the, this final, which is needed, Lauren can't certify it unless we do these, but, but yet, are we creating harm other places as per the direction that was given in the, in the initial phases of this? I'm looking for direction so that, as, as we look at it as a city, we look at the property around it, or the city in general, are we, are we landlocking a project and hurting everybody else? else, you know, which is contrary to the general plan?
Right.
And so, that's the direction I'm looking for.
Okay. I, I understand the concern that you're describing, and the, what I have to say about this, is that there's limits to the, to what this vehicle, this, I'm calling this amended map a vehicle, it's a planning tool. There's limits to what it can do, okay? And the, what, you're pointing to a finding that was made and approved by the planning commission at that time, in 2009. And the purpose of this amended map, actually, the power of this amended map does not allow that approval to be revisited. Now, there were, there were ways to revisit that, certainly, there, that approval could have been appealed, at the time, right after it was approved, but that's not the, the purpose of this one. And, and I'll just repeat that the, that the, the power that the state law and the municipal code gives this resolution, is that it has to do with conditions that are no longer appropriate or necessary. So, it's about removing conditions, it's not about revisiting the original approval and, and having a new opinion on the findings that were approved back in 2009. I'll, I'll also go on that, in the state map act, in the section that authorizes this type of amendment, it adds the phrase that the modifications do not, may not impose any additional burden on the fee, on the fee owners of the property. So, I think what they're, what the state law is trying to make clear there, is that this is not an opportunity to put on new conditions, or to, in any way, take away the entitlement that was approved back in 2009.
Well, I guess, and I don't want to belabor the point, and we'll turn it over to the public for comment, but I guess the, the overall concern I have is, I serve at the city's pleasure, and, and I want to make sure that the city has not, has not approved things, and then turned around to not fulfill this obligation, which could end up having a problem for us, and that's why I'm bringing up the questions.
I understand, it's fair.
Any comments or questions from the commissioners?
I'm, I'm still just trying to wrap my, my head around exactly what we're being asked to approve here. These are simply conditions that are no longer relevant, and we're asking, who's, who's asking us to remove these?
City.
The city? The city's asking us to remove these, okay.
Yeah, and probably a simple, simple way to address it is, is, in the initial intent, we had this big a pie that we wanted to do, we didn't have our, the money to participate in our portion of it, and so, it ended up being scaled down. So, in order for it to be legal, for, for our city engineer to certify it, we have to make these corrections, say, "This is what the tentative tract map is now, today."
Yeah, that makes sense.
Did I get that correct?
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, then, at this time, I'll turn the time over to the public, if there's any public comment, they can ask the commissioners, or they can ask the city attorney on this matter, how this is relative. And to be sure and state your name and your address, and your time limit is five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tom Fallgatter. My address, address is 4550 California Avenue, Bakersfield, California. My family owns property next to the Walmart site. Can I answer all the questions I'm supposed to ask? Answer?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. It's Mr. Polchin, right?
P, like in Peter.
Polchin.
Close enough.
I, well, I think we've, I've talked to you before, but I apologize, I'm getting older, my ears aren't as good as they used to be.
No, no, it's quite all right.
This, the, action that's being taken tonight is a discretionary action, correct?
That's true.
Okay. And that, that's an important legal concept. That means you don't have to do this. And if I understand, and I have come into this late, so if I say something that's wrong or unfactual, I'm welcome to be corrected. But as I understand, that this action has been motivated by the fact that the city is short of money, and it can't perform its portion of some of these improvements. But, and so, even assuming that's true, this action will relieve Walmart of a significant financial obligation for their share of these improvements also, is that correct?
I will leave the questions about the specifics about the project to staff, because my role was to deal with the, the legal mechanism to accomplish what the city wanted to accomplish.
The, yes, if I can help, and Lauren is coming up, our city engineer as well, these, these changes in the, the work, schedule of work that was accomplished, was mutually discussed, negotiated with our city engineer, myself, and the Walmart engineering and Walmart team, as to the items, as we went through this. The original plan was to have Walmart construct public improvements for us, that are really not nexus necessarily to Walmart. In other words, basically, they were agreeing to build public improvements beyond what we would normally be able to condition them. Some of these improvements, a lot of these improvements are those, and Lauren probably can answer that, so they were, we were going to pay them essentially to do public improvement work, and we didn't end up with the money to be able to do that, so that's part of why these were pulled. If you'd like, Lauren, you can probably get more detail on it.
No, that's, that's a very accurate statement, Gary. The original concept was to have some proportional participation in some of these improvements. There was a list in the, what was a development agreement that was originally prepared, that identified projects that were going to be totally funded by the city, and projects that were going to be funded by, by Walmart. And some of those were proportional participation, such as, as Gary had indicated.
Let me back up a second. When I got here, I asked to see if I could get a copy of staff report, and apparently, there are no copies of the staff report, which is another handicap. Does the staff report outline the proportionality of these changes? In other words, how much of a certain change is the money saved by the city? How much is money saved by Walmart? Is that in the staff report?
Isn't it proportionate?
No, the staff report is merely a identification of those projects that were removed from the project, or pared down.
I'll sort of go, go off the reservation, so to speak, here for a second. It seems to me that the, the planning commission members are put in an awkward position here, in that you're being asked to give up things that would benefit the city, that would be paid for by Walmart. You're being asked to do that because the city can't pay its share. But, in, to make a rational decision, it seems to me you would need to know, what are those? If, if there's one project that the city is required to put up $25,000, and Walmart's required to put up $250,000, it would make sense, the city might make an effort to find the $25,000 for that particular one. And as I, as I understand it, you don't have that information before you. And as was indicated, it's proportional, which means, I think the fundamental thing here is that Walmart benefits. So, I'm going to go back to Mr. Polchin. Can the, I'll say it in a different way. The proponent, or the landowner, which would be Walmart in this case, can agree to additional conditions, they just cannot be imposed on them through this process, that's correct, isn't it?
They can always volunteer conditions.
Okay. So, if you're going to give up something, and you're going to save Walmart money, then it seems it's appropriate for you, from a negotiating standpoint, to look for some benefit from that. Maybe you give up half of these things, and have Walmart pay 100% of the other ones, but this gets back to what I'm saying about how much each one costs, you know, this needs to be looked at. I feel like you're being asked to throw money away. Now, our, the, our family's interest directly, I've sort of been preaching now, now I'll be selfish, is in this question of access. There's a long record of the city trying to get Walmart to give formal access from the town, through our property, on it to Walmart, on to, I want to say Brundage, because I live in Bakersfield now, to Bowman. And there are lots of letters and so forth, and the city has worked hard to help us with that, and our, and it's not totally selfish, because we think that's great for your circulation, and in fact, that's the circulation that's shown on the city's specific plan. Okay? So, what my, my pitch to you is that, that's a good thing for the city, not just for the Fallgetters. It's back to what the commissioner was saying about getting good circulation, and that, before you give up all this money to Walmart, you can negotiate conditions that they will agree to. And I, we would like to see you negotiate a condition. I'd like to see you review the whole thing and see what you're giving up. But specifically, we'd like to have you negotiate with Walmart to, to require them to enter into a reciprocal easement agreement. We sent Walmart a reciprocal easement agreement eight years ago, I don't know, seven, I mean, the city has lots, I don't want to bore you with the whole history of this thing, but there's years and years and years of history. So, we would ask that you not approve this, that you look at this more carefully from the city's standpoint, what trade-offs can you do here? How can you take the least hit possible, and require Walmart to perform as much as you can? And also, then negotiate a condition from them that they agree to, can't be forced. I'm accepting counsel's statement on that regard, I have not had time to research it. But you negotiate something where they provide that access for the benefit of the community, and, quite frankly, for the benefit of our property. So, that's our pitch tonight, is that, you know, you kind of go, whoa, here, let's not just throw money away, and, and also, we've been trying to get this access for eight, nine years, why don't we use this as an opportunity to negotiate, not to force, a condition that's beneficial for the circulation? I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any. I went seven minutes, huh?
I can comment, sir, that this negotiation process with Walmart is almost a 15-year-long process. Also, the, so it's over several councils, over several planning commissions, and the only two people, frankly, that have been involved in the project from its beginning is myself and the entitlement attorney from Walmart, Matthew Nelson. So, we thought about getting a lifetime achievement award plaque there when it was built. I would point out also, the project is actually complete, there's an occupancy, it's doing business, it's in process. What we're doing here is trying to, again, get the final map, so that they can sell the four, the three properties, or four properties in the front, depending on how you want to do it. So, we would not affect their operations at all, in terms of the regular store, that's not actually at discussion. The unfortunate part is, the access is on the existing store location, where they have a occupancy permit, and they're operating on. It's the, it's actually the main galley in front of the store, that we're talking about for the easement, that goes in front of their pharmacy.
And I understand that, but?
Yeah.
They can, they can, as your counsel told you, they, they can consent to a condition even that's on a parcel.
They can certainly consent to whatever they like, yes, sir.
And the fact that, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to say that I would point out that, in terms of the money issue, we worked, the city started, how we started this process, just so you can be aware, the Walmart, we, we negotiated with Walmart essentially based on the conditions, the initial conditions, the conditions that are sort of the essential required conditions for their project, their physical site project. We ended up with a number of about $4 million in their costs, their improvements. City then added in another approximately, what was it, $3 million at one point? It was pretty close to that, wasn't it, Lauren, somewhere in that number?
2.89 is what the council had allocated from TAP.
Always an engineer, down to the last decimal. $2.89 million. And so, we had a total project expenditure essentially of 6.8. What happened is, as you can tell, we actually, other councils changed the commitment of the dollars that we had originally planned, we weren't sure of those dollars coming in at one point, because we were talking, long story, this is 15 years of discussion in three seconds, but basically, the dollar set numbers were there. So, we're not really talking about saving Walmart money, in this case, we're really talking about saving this, well, actually, it's a fact that the city doesn't have the money to do the projects we're listing here. So, it's, it's not really that way. However, certainly, you know, we have, as you, you stated, we've made a major effort to try to convince Walmart of the, the desire of the city to get that mutual access, we've sent letters, we've, we've had managers, councils, I think, even, if I'm not mistaken, Jim, you were one of the councils that voted to have a letter sent out to Walmart, but this is during one of the other managers. And so, we've tried to do that. Walmart has been very persistent in not wanting to grant those easements. And frankly, I don't know what their logic is for that, other than what they've told me, which is their concern about traffic associated with their pharmacy access at that end of the building, because the, the, the proposed access is right at the, is right, goes right by, well, I have a map here, right by their pharmacy, which is a In-N-Out pharmacy, let me see if I can find you the map here, a second, right there. The, the, this, the easement we're talking about here, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, because this is what they're telling me, is right here, this is the easement area they're talking about, continuing this easement in, because the portion that we're talking about, Mr. Fallgator's talking about, is this lot right here, if I'm not correct, please correct me.
Yes, and goes a little further west than that.
Goes, yeah, it certainly, now, this is the easement, the, the main area that they're concerned with, according to what I've talked to them about, the only thing I could get out of them, frankly, as to why they were not there, is it, is because this is their drive-through, and it turns around and comes in this way, goes out this way, so they got a circulation.
Opposite.
Opposite, okay. Whoops, am I on the wrong end?
No, no, you're, you're right.
Okay, it goes this way and out that way.
The line marking is they're, they're showing this, but most of the traffic comes there and comes out, but you've got two lanes, and it comes out this way, and so, you've got this small area.
So, anyway, that's been their, that was the only thing I could get from them, as to why they did so persistent in not wanting to grant that easement. And they also point out that, that Mr. Fallgatter's family sold him the land for the property, and that they could have required that easement when they sold him the land. So, that's the only two things I've heard them say, on this issue, from a staff standpoint.
Okay, I would like to respond, if I may, I don't know what the?
Please. That's the Walmart site, by the way.
Okay, so, you guys have all been other places where there are Walmarts, lots of Walmarts set right down in the middle of shopping centers. There's a Walmart on Rosedale in Bakersfield that people drive back and forth in front of, that has reciprocal easements for the whole shopping center, very common. This, this pharmacy thing is a canard, it's, it's misleading. The access could be bent a little bit, as far as that goes. I mean, this, this is, I'm trying to use nice words, it's not really true. And so, it's easy to fix. If that's a legitimate concern, that can be bent a little bit further west, and get away from the pharmacy. So, and back to what the Fallgetters could or couldn't have done, it seems like a little bit of a cheap shot. little bit of a cheap shot from Walmart, but Walmart did not want to negotiate anything but the purchase and sale at that time, okay? So, forget the Fallgetters, think of the city, all right? If you don't, this is what your specific plan shows for circulation. This is what you have decided, or your predecessors have decided would be the right circulation for the benefit of the city. So forget us. And I want to go back, I respect what you're saying, Mr. Parsons, but the bottom line is Walmart will benefit from this, they will save significant amounts of money. And it seems to me, at the very least, the commissioners are entitled to see what that looks like and what those projects are, and where, what are we giving up? And is there something else we could do, number one? And it seems to me the, the people of Richcrest, the citizens of Richcrest should have that to look at also before, I, I mean, the last time I heard, Richcrest wasn't rolling in dough, maybe there's something could be negotiated here that's beneficial. Walmart agreed to these things, I don't think you should just throw your hands up and say, okay, we're going to let go of them because we can't afford to do every one of these. I think that's a, that would be an unfortunate decision for the city, the, the whole of the city, so. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Well, I guess my brother's going to now correct me. He's the older brother, so
So brothers are four.
Yeah, that's what his prerogative.
I've got three of them, I know what you're talking about.
Well, maybe we ought to have him, maybe we ought to have him address this, because be mindful, each speaker's only supposed to have five minutes, sir.
Okay, I think he just wanted to bring up one, something about
Come on, Jim.
The history.
Come say your piece.
Just because you weren't here eight years ago doesn't mean you now throw up your hands and say, I don't know what those guys did. I mean, it's in your lap now.
Sure.
Jim Fallgatter, 207 West Cobblestone. The only thing I would add to what my brother said is to call your attention in a packet to the specific paragraph in the
Is this your packet or in our packet?
Yeah, that's, that's your packet.
Okay.
I mean, your copy.
Okay.
In there, on the
What page?
The first item in that packet is the paragraph in this Walmart-Richcrest specific plan that says, that talks to reciprocal access, okay? This wasn't put in there for Walmart's benefit, this is with adjoining properties. This very paragraph was cited by, first of all, presented and agreed to by the City Council 5-0, when they instructed Kurt Wilson to send a letter to Walmart saying, hey, guys, what are you doing here? We said that reciprocal access is allowed, and now you're now responding to the landowner next door who wants to have access. Tom mentioned the local, Walmart on Rosedale. Well, if you go over to our Walmart here, there are like seven different pathways that go across between, you know, where Staples was, where Albertson's and everything else is. It's very unusual that there isn't pathways going from joint parcels around Walmart. That's one of the big deals that they sell is, and they did sell to us, was that we would, they would be, end up being a magnet store and bring additional retail, et cetera, to their locations. So, I went out and studied also, having to do with the pharmacy question, which I agree with my brother totally, I went to all the pharmacies in town here and looked at how much space there was to get in and out, I did a traffic count and whatever, which I can go find and send to you, this is a non-question, it's a ridiculous question. There, there is so much room, much more, so much more room with the new Super Walmart as pharmacy access that it's really not on the map. So, you've heard our pitch, take a look at that particular paragraph, I think it's clear what the meaning was, the city council understood that meaning, previous city managers have understood that meaning, meaning, Walmart understands that meaning, and we would like some help, and this is the opportunity, we were told that, in Gary Parsons' letter, you know, in an amendment to, and we won't go back over why this one seems to be different or whatever, that would be the place that we should bring this up. I was told many times, bring it up when they ask for revision to the map, okay? So here is the opportunity, and I don't find it, well, we don't have the staff report, amongst those lists of things like, hey, guys, give us something back to let us get going with our specific plan for the Sierra Marketplace. Okay, we're doubling down here, so please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. So Lloyd, can you
Yes, I'm here.
Can you comment on the, the paragraph he's referring to, is a paragraph from the Richcrest commercial specific plan referred to in the city manager's letter to Walmart dated 3/29/2011? And in item three, it says onsite driveways shall be permitted to provide common access between specific plan and adjacent properties.
So this is in a specific plan that was approved with the Walmart project?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the question?
Well, I'm asking if, if, whether or not this condition has been met, whether or not we can, we can make a vote on this, or whether or not we have to condition this, or I'm asking for counsel, is what I'm asking.
Right, well, what I'll say is that that question is not before you, so certainly you have the discretion, the planning commission has the discretion on the resolution that is before you tonight, which has been agendized, which is the removal of certain conditions. Now, what, the, the part that I'm reminding the commission is not before the commission tonight, is to revisit findings that were made in the past, or determining whether the entire project is consistent with other regulations, those are not before you tonight.
Well, then you put us in an impossible position because we're talking about modifying the tentative tract map, 11-7-90, and all of this was part of that, that original condition. So, now, we didn't complete, as, as we have up on the board here, you can't see it, these are the following conditions, and by the way, for those in the audience and gallery watching on television, our agenda or staff reports are available online, you can go in and pull that information up online, so it is available to you. And so each one of these conditions, as, as you go through it, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, and that's the resolution that is before us. But if, if we take this as an entity into itself at face value, then I would agree with what you're saying, but if, if we're looking at it as a whole, it seems as though we're cherry picking. Does that make sense?
I, I hear what you're saying, I understand the frustration, I do.
So, what's your counsel? I mean, I can, I can look at this as a whole, but I'm saying there's all these other factors, and for us to approve the modification of a tentative tract map, I understand that they have a certificate of occupancy and that, but for us to approve it is to turn a blind eye to everything else that, that the city might have asked. Now, I understand, and I have no problem with the fact that, that we had a limited budget that was offered for the project, and that was with city participation as well as Walmart's, and, and these are some of the, the modifications that were made because of those limitations, and I have absolutely no problem with that. But I'm wondering whether or not, if we sign this, if we approve this and sign it, if we're shutting the door to, to be able for, for recourse for anybody, or whether or not the city will end up with any recourse.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the, any action that you take tonight would not extinguish any element of the specific plan. If that, if that element of, of that statement regarding access to an adjoining, that, that statement doesn't get extinguished by your action. All your action is tonight is to say that these improvements that were originally called for are actually not in a specific plan, but in a development agreement that the planning commission approved at that time. All we're saying is we're clarifying that those elements were not constructed or were pared down, per the original review by the planning commission. As a matter of fact, I believe the planning commission never saw the specific plan in their action initially, that the city council was the only group that actually had any action on a specific plan. So, what the planning commission originally approved were the conditions that were identified within a development agreement, and these are the elements that were identified in that development agreement. And so, those elements, as they were approved as conditions for the project, we're asking the commission to say, say that the map can be amended by reducing those improvements and paring down those improvements.
Just by these line items?
Just by those line items only.
If we certify this, this tentative tract map, then it does, does it not?
We're not certifying the tentative tract map, we're asking you to eliminate
Approve the modification.
Approve just the modifications that are requested now, we still have a final map to go through, process to go through. This is specifically only identifying, what we're asking here for, the resolution asks for you to eliminate these particular conditional items, or these items, from the original, actually development agreement, as he indicated, that was defined in that. We're not asking you to, this is the final, all end-all, you know, overall, you know, the door closes forever kind of thing. This is specific to this particular resolution, that's all staff's asking for.
And, and Mr. Chairman, all this does is it allows me then to be able to, if the, if the council approves the final map, it then allows me to sign that final map that says it complies, it, it conforms to the tentative map or the amended tentative map that you're taking action upon tonight.
May I be recognized by the chairman?
Yes, chair recognizes you.
Couple of things, Mr. Colt mentioned that these conditions were in the development agreement or the development, is that correct, not, not as a condition of the map itself?
These were listed within a development agreement that the planning commission took action upon.
If, if I may, if I may, it was a draft development agreement because it was never approved by a city council.
Well, did these conditions end up being on the tentative then, Mr. Colton?
Well, they're, the, the conditions that are in the development agreement were incorporated by reference into the conditions of approval of the tentative map that was approved by the planning commission.
The conditions in the development agreement that were, was never signed and was only a draft, were incorporated to the approval of the map, is that what you're saying?
Into the approval of the tentative map, correct.
So there's nothing
Those are the conditions that are being amended here.
Well, how do you amend those conditions if they aren't on the map itself? But I don't think that's correct, guys, but let me jump it, all right? I don't think that's appropriate, okay? We have been told for years that the city did not have any legal ability to do anything to help us. It would send letters and it tried to help us, but we have been told for years it had no legal ability. Now, tonight, we're being, it's being insinuated that you'll have another time to get this done, you won't have another time, okay? This is the end, this is, and that's the nature of a, a map, is it is discretionary. You can say no tonight, you aren't in a box, okay? You have no legal obligation to approve this, so you aren't in a box at all. Walmart wants to make the sale of some properties. If you go back, if you do not approve this and you look at the, what you're doing, these numbers, and try and help the circulation, you can do that, you have the absolute legal right to do that. And you don't have to be crazed, money-hungry people, but you can look at, maybe we can move some things around and get something out of this, and you can ask them as a voluntary condition to provide this access. So you're not, you're not in a box, you don't have to do this tonight. You can, it's a negotiated deal, as your staff has said, so it can be negotiated further. I assume, based on my experience over the years, I would be incredibly surprised if Walmart wasn't willing to relook at some of these things in order to get this, these conditions modified so it can get a final map. I'm not asking you to put a gun at Walmart's head, but this one provision has been in there for 10 or longer years, and we've never been able to get them, and the city's tried, and we've never been able to get them to actually do it, okay? And, and we've been told amendments to the map, that's the time the city has the legal power in the sense of it can say no, and so we're asking you, say no, and help us negotiate this easement, and, and, and do yourself a favor with getting a better deal, and I don't mean to say staff didn't do a good deal, but I think you could do better, and if not, certainly I think Walmart could be wrestled fairly easy, might take a little bit, to grant this reciprocal easement, that is part of your plan. Okay, we didn't invent this tonight, been there for years, it was part of the specific plan, so we would urge you to not approve this, okay? I would urge you to send it back to staff with your comments about what you'd like to see staff do, and have, have this, take another shot at this thing. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say a few things, Chairman Cox?
Yes, Commissioner.
So, so one, we, I mean, I understand exactly what you guys are saying. The planning commission, however, doesn't have legal authority to negotiate on behalf of the city. There's also several things that we're being asked to approve that affect the city's budget, which we almost never do as a planning commission. I feel very uncomfortable with the planning commission taking these, these items on, because we have no idea whether or not, what the position of the city council, if they, what their priorities are in terms of completing some of these in the future. As far, as long as I've ever been on the city council, the last four years, I've never been asked, you know, let's prioritize our budget so that we can complete some of these things, do we not want to complete some of these things? That never came up, so I'm, I'm guessing the current council hasn't had a chance to, to address that either. I would prefer to see this actually sent to the city council and, and not have the planning commission decide to remove these conditions.
Well, I think, be mindful, and I think the attorney can probably clarify that too, even if we approve it, it still has to go to council for approval anyway.
So if we remove the
We're not the final authority. Right.
This is Lloyd Hildsen. The final map goes to, must be approved by council, the tentative map is actually within the power of the planning commission. The original approval of the tentative parcel map was approved by the planning commission without any further action. So it, this amendment would not have to go to the city council, it's not required.
Only for the final map, yeah, so, right, but removing the conditions doesn't have to be approved by the, the councils, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
But removing the conditions does alleviate, does it impact the city's budget and alleviate the financial
Be mindful that these, these things that are reflected on this resolution are what's on the ground today. In other words, these, this is what's been completed, this is what they're not going to complete. In other words, there's not going to be any extension, there's not going to be more budget for it, there's not, what you see today is what we for it, there's not, what you see today is what we've got. This was the original scope, these were in there, they're now taking those out.
But what I'm understanding is the reason we're taking them out is because the city has not prioritized the money to complete them. Isn't that correct?
Lauren?
There's been no budget to, and there was, were not sufficient funds, nor is there a budget to do any of these elements. We found them actually to be not necessary, or not required, that all the improvements that were constructed currently do protect the public's interests, satisfies the master plan for the drainage elements, it protects the Walmart site and those adjoining lots. So the public's health benefits and their welfare is still intact.
So you're saying that even if there had been money prioritized, or if there was money prioritized today to go towards some of these things, these aren't necessary?
Not, not at this point, no. These are, these would have been additional enhancements, but not necessary to protect the public's interest in flood protection, or transportation, or their health, their general health. It protects Walmart's interest for protecting their site from flooding. It still constructs the master plan improvements that they had joined and which they constructed. So these were over and above what was necessary to protect the public's interests.
So, so for all these conditions, were all of these simply, in terms of the money flowing, were all these simply just Walmart was a pass-through for the city, like the city was paying for all these?
Yes.
Or how much, I mean, the question was asked, and I would like to hear this answered, how much of Walmart's financial obligation is being relieved by us taking away these conditions?
Well, generally, the city's participation is usually on the larger participation for master plan proportion of facilities. Any one of these, you can look at and say, well, just how much of that improvement is Walmart's that they're going to need. And what you'd find is very little. But these are master plan proportion improvements, which require much more in terms of size of those roadways, of size of those channels. So the city participates to a greater extent to meet those master plan proportions. Walmart uses very little of that.
So are you saying we're basically sharing the cost of these improvements with Walmart?
We were participating in some of them, yes. There were some that were absolutely all city, there were some that were absolutely all Walmart. And there was a, there was a proportional participation. And generally, in participating, the city participates more heavily because the size of those improvements are of a master plan proportion, much more so-
More beneficial to the whole city.
... than will be necessary for just handling Walmart's loads on our facilities.
Right. That makes sense. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Mr. Folgitter, let me come back to public comment until we're through with the Commission here.
Thank you.
Any other comment from the Commission? Okay, so the only thing that came to mind that I'm aware of for Commissioner Sanders was in this period of time, there was a maximum that the city or Walmart was willing to participate to even get the project.
Okay.
Okay? And, and so during the time of negotiation, and pardon my language, this is a wish list. I have a wish list, this is what I want to get done. And by the time construction started, this is what I ended up with. Am I close, Lauren?
Yes, yes, you're absolutely correct.
Okay. So for a layman, you know, for me to try and paint my own picture and understand it, you know, this is what I want, this is what I got. So when I look at this, I don't look and go, well, golly, you know, Walmart was going to have to cough up $2.8 million to match our $2.8 million. That's probably not the fact. We would like to have all these fiscal improvements, but, you know, any negotiation, I'll turn around and say, I want this much, but I may settle for this, even in buying a home. And that's what it came to. But the original approved, as I understand it, correct me, because I'm trying to make sure I understand if we're going to have a vote tonight, on the original tentative tract map, that this was what they originally approved. But then it got negotiated through the process down to what you see today, which is minus these pieces. And that's what was before us.
So it was already negotiated to not complete the, I mean, that was?
No, it was much, it was well into, oh, gosh, I think somewhere around 2012, 2013, that Walmart came in and said that they only had so much that they could participate in the project. And I think about that same time is when our TAB funds, we had a restriction on our TAB funds, and we were left with nothing to negotiate with. So we had to sit down and look at what is absolutely necessary to protect the public's interest, to protect the Walmart site, and still be able to have safe improvements that meet the public's needs.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Any other comment from public?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission.
Mr. Folgitter.
Mr. Kulp, you mentioned in your comments that some of the improvements were 100% Walmart. Are any of these 100% Walmart?
I don't, I don't believe so. I'd have to go back to the original development agreement, actually, to be able to point those out to you tonight. I wouldn't be prepared to go through that one by one.
Pardon?
I would not be prepared to go through that.
You would not be prepared to do that?
Tonight. I'd have to go back and refresh my-
But some of them could be 100% Walmart, right? Could be.
You know, I suppose it's possible that there could be one in there.
There's an engineer's estimate, isn't there, Mr. Kulp, that provides a estimate of the cost of every one of these items, a dollar amount that has been determined by you and your staff or a prior engineer for the city, along with Walmart's engineer, that says how much each of these costs. And there's also a document that's going to say, of that cost, this much is what the city will contribute, and this much is what Walmart will contribute, correct? There is a document that says that, right?
Well, the development agreement fairly well itemized those elements that Walmart was to construct and what the city was to construct and did have a preliminary cost estimate associated with it.
There's an engineer's estimate. Isn't there an engineer's estimate as to those numbers?
As far as the proportional participation, I don't recall that in the, I don't recall that in the development agreement. I believe that it's not a part of the exhibits that were attached, but in the body of the development agreement.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. What's not part of the development agreement?
Well, I, as far as the proportional participation, I don't know that that was in the individual exhibits that identified what Walmart was to construct and what the city was to construct. I believe the proportional element was in the body of the development agreement. And a way to recite that for you now would be difficult.
Tonight, I understand that. But there is an engineer's estimate. When you guys sat down and had your negotiations, you knew the amount of cost of these things and what you were giving up, I assume that's correct, right? I mean, there's always an engineer's estimate for all of these proposed conditions, correct?
Well, yes, we had to kind of reverse engineer based upon what Walmart had for a ceiling to work on their project, and we knew what we might be able to offer. And so we had to reverse engineer to identify the projects that would fit within a budget.
Mr. Chairman, to address one of your comments, if you buy a house, and in the process of buying the house, the seller agrees to do 10 things to the house to fix it up for you when you buy it, at the seller's expense, that's part of the deal, okay? And if the deal is you will help a portion of those expenses, but you don't want to do that anymore, that doesn't mean when you ask the seller to provide you money instead of the improvements they already agreed to as part of the deal, that doesn't mean you're being a bad person and extracting something you're not entitled to. That was part of the purchase price. It's just good business for the city to ask for what it was going to get, at least the portion that Walmart was going to pay. This is a very odd thing to me, quite frankly. You guys are sitting here getting ready to throw away about $2.8 million, I'm doing the calculation in my head, here as I stand, I have a feeling it might be more than that. You don't even know what each of these items is. I don't see how you can be asked to make a decision. I mean, you're just going to throw away $2.8, $3 million. You could do maybe two of these and get them done. Mr. Kulp said in his comments, when they, you asked if they were needed, Commissioner Sanders, you said, are these needed? He said, no, not now, okay? 10 years from now, there's going to be people sitting down here or out there wondering, why did we not finish these improvements? What happened? And it's your responsibility to do the best you can with what you have. Final word, the reciprocal easement costs nothing, okay? You don't have to ask Walmart to spend a penny, all right? They're not, the reciprocal easement we proposed does not require them to do anything, okay? It's free. If we build that road in there as required under reciprocal easement, we pay, okay? So we're not asking to get into Walmart's pocket for that easement, nothing to do with it, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, one more time, if I may allow.
Mr. Folgitter?
I would like to step up a little higher in this discussion just for one minute. And that is to put forward the idea, Commissioners, that you're looking out for the citizens of Richcrest here, okay? So when you give away, or perhaps we could say, don't negotiate something that you could, you have to think about what you might be giving up. In this particular case, that reciprocal access is, we're interested in that because we're interested in running very, very hard to try and bring a business into that area for the benefit, obviously, we want to sell the property, but for the benefit of Richcrest, which means, you know, excise tax money. That's what we've been talking about in this city every single year, how poor we are, how can we attract business? How can we, what can we do? We wring our hands, we spend millions trying to jumpstart little businesses to make money for the city. Here we have something that costs the city nothing, costs Walmart nothing. And our family and associates want to run on our nickel as hard as we can to attract the business, who won't come unless it's a, it's a good deal for them. And all we're asking you to do is to, you know, use your leverage here in a positive sense of the word, totally, to allow that possibility and not close the door to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lloyd, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I just have one question for you. Do we have the right to condition the resolution that's in front of us?
Well, I would go back to the Subdivision Map Act, which says that the, that this vehicle, this amendment cannot increase the burden on the landowner.
Okay, and so if there's-
That's the limitation, that's the limitation of this.
So if there's no financial obligation to Walmart, I'm just trying to figure out, do we have an obligation here, looking at the extended documents, or are we limited to the document that's in front of us?
Well, in terms of the project, you're limited to the document in front of you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners?
I'm just curious, Chairman Cox, where were you trying to go with that?
Well, if you remember in the beginning, and I'm, you know, I'm sorry that, I'm glad that the public's had time to comment, I was trying to figure out if we could put a condition on it, because one of the questions that I had initially asked was, in the approval of this, you have three other pads that can be developed, whether it's a gas station, you know, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. Well, without the approval, can they move forward with any of those projects? So with no cost being borne by Walmart, could we, in a way, have them at least address it, or are we limited to the document that's in front of us? And so I need a legal opinion that says, I'm limited to this particular document. I may want this-
Right.
But I can't necessarily go in and add additional language. And so what I'm asking is, can we? And that's where I'm going. Public comment is over, sir. Sir, public comment is over. We've heard your argument, we're now discussing it between the Commissioners? Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of, I think, I'm kind of thinking on the same lines, is I think there's an opportunity here that we don't have the authority to ask for.
So Lloyd, I guess what I'm asking is, with the document that's sitting in front of us, do we profit anything by tabling it for 30 days to be able to look at this further, as was set by the Folgatters, if there's no additional cost to Walmart to have an easement there for future development, which would be the expense of the other developer, could we not condition that and then approve it? But, you know, if we tabled it for 30 days, we look at the language, we look at the letters that the city has sent, you know, is there a possibility of conditioning this in a small way so that Walmart, when they go to sell or develop the other three lots, would have some sort of accountability to the city without hurting Walmart, but yet overall benefiting the city? Do you understand that long question?
Yes, I do, I do. I'll say that first, it's always within your power to table an item. Whether, what you will gain from tabling it for 30 days to see if there's something that could possibly be conditioned, some condition that would be acceptable, both legally and, yeah, legally acceptable, that, I mean, I can't say one way or the other. I can just say that the, as to the point about if it doesn't cost Walmart anything financially, well, just keep in mind that an easement is a burden on a property. So whether it costs them anything, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's not a burden on the property owner. So that's what the, what I can tell you is that the state law says that this vehicle, an amended map, cannot put an additional burden on the property owner than what was approved originally, because that's not the point of this. Whether there's something to be gained by tabling the item, that is, you know, there's unlimited possibilities there, so I can't say one way or the other.
May I say something?
Yes, Mr. Sanders?
So there was, there was a very analogous thing that happened with a different developer when I was on the City Council, where we had the charter school needed easement for a separate driveway through the back of the AMG property and down to the side of the property, so that they can improve kind of a very, basically a dangerous situation of traffic flow right now for the children. AMG owns the senior housing property next to them, they didn't want to give that up. So I was on the council at the time, we worked with the charter school and the other developer to, and we actually, that's exactly what we did, we negotiated on some of the conditions of their development agreement to get the easement needed for the charter school. That's exactly what happened. But that has to happen at the council level. We can't do that here, we don't have the authority. So that's why I would like to see this go to the City Council- So, that's why I would like to see this go to the City Council. Maybe they don't want to do that, I don't know. But I think we need to give them the opportunity to, so that's what I would like to see happen tonight.
If I can chime in on that point, the, just in terms of the creation of the Planning Commission is, from the start, is a delegation of authority from the City Council, so it would always be, obviously, the City Council is the higher power.
So, if they wanted to overturn this, they could, I mean, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's various ways it could get there. The Planning Commission could make a decision, any decision, and it could be appealed to the City Council, or the City Council could call it up on their own motion. But certainly, if the Planning Commission wished, desired for the City Council to be the decision maker, then you could certainly ask them to do that.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Thoughts? We'll open it back up to the public.
The mayor wants to talk, sir. I'm sorry. He wants to speak a lot to you.
The mayor didn't decide to supersede you, and I'm not speaking as mayor, I'm speaking as Peggy Breeden, resident of the city of Richcrest, 825 Sonja. Let me ask a procedural question, and I'd like to ask council if they can respond to, if he can respond. If it's sent back to the City Council, does the City Council have the authority to change anything on this that you were going to delete? You were saying that is the only action that is there for anybody to take. Is that the same thing with the City Council?
Well, Mayor Breeden, I'll say that the, the substance of the list in Exhibit A to this resolution, that's a technical matter, legal did not make that list. So, that's the, that's what the city engineer has found, the, the project as constructed, where the project as constructed varies from the original draft development agreement that was prepared. So, whether any of those items can be moved or changed, that would be a matter of, ultimately, what would have to be decided is, does the final map before it records conform to whatever the conditions of approval are?
The conditions of approval as originally given, or conditions of approval as potentially changed by council and/or Planning Commission?
That, that's right, as changed. That's the point of this resolution, is to change the conditions of approval, and then whatever that final action is, whatever ultimately is in Exhibit A, then the final map must conform to that.
If I can help-
Can you explain that in English to me?
Yeah, if I can help me, but I can clarify that.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand that.
My understanding, sir, is that you can eliminate items from the conditions, but you can't add items. The council can't add-
That's right, that's correct, that's correct. Any, any amended resolution that is passed, amended, an amendment to the tentative map conditions of approval, that's correct. They can only remove conditions, they can't add conditions. But as far as the Exhibit A, whether that has to be the way it is, that's a technical matter of whether, of how the project was built.
So, so you could choose the council, or the Planning Commission could choose to say, "We're gonna eliminate six, item six on this, on this list of seven, for example, or 13, whatever it is, and we don't want to eliminate that condition." But we couldn't turn around and say, "I'm gonna add a condition," you know, "at the end."
So, so asking, let me add on there, so asking that reciprocal agreements be part of this, we could not do, nor could you. Was that correct?
Peggy Breeden, I, I do not see how that could be added in this, as a new condition onto this resolution and conform to the state law and the municipal code. I do not see how that, how, that just seems pretty clear, that that would be adding a burden onto the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What, what the council can do, however, is, is talk to Walmart and say, "Look, in exchange for removing these conditions, we'd like you to volunteer a condition," and that is the reciprocal, reciprocal agreement. Is that correct?
I agree with that.
And that's what I'm asking the council to do, to consider.
So, to not, not belabor this, what I would probably suggest, if that's what you feel like, is, is put that point of order forward and see if we have a second.
Yeah.
So, I'll close the public hearing and we'll take a vote. This is a, a vote on the tentative tract map 11-790, the conditions of approval, resolution.
I'm not exactly sure how to motion for that. Can I motion to have this sent to the City Council for consideration? I mean, what, what's the proper way to?
Well, what, what, this is Lloyd Pilkson. What, what is it that you want to, just in, in plain language, what is it that you want to put forward?
He would like to send this to the City Council, who can say, "We will, we're willing to approve all of these things, so that you have it signed up, but we would like to have a reciprocal agreement, you know, for an easement."
I see.
I would, I would at least like to give them the opportunity to consider that, that course of action.
I mean, at least an, an effort by, one, one more effort.
Yeah.
Well, okay, let, let's look at it this way. To send it to the City Council is one thing, so that's, that would be a motion to send the resolution to the City Council for its decision. Then it will get to decide whatever it wants.
They could do whatever they want at that point.
Yeah, they could do whatever they want. Now, if you're wanting to make a recommendation, a specific recommendation, that City Council consider something, then you could certainly add that to the motion, but that, that wouldn't be the, the, the resolution that they would have before them.
Yeah, and I don't know that I've dug into this issue enough to, to really formulate a, a recommendation at this point on, on what all we would ask them to ask for. So, I would simply ask, I would make a motion that we send this resolution to the City Council.
Okay, now, before we get a second on that, my only concern with just that, and we have two council members in the chamber, if I was sitting on the council, I would want to know why my Planning Commission didn't do something.
Yeah.
Okay? And so I think you're gonna have to have a recommendation associated with that, because the truth of the matter is, all we have is before us is the things that we're not gonna do.
Yeah. And in preparation for this meeting, that's all I, that's all I studied.
Right.
I wasn't digging in so deep.
But whether it's the specific plan or anything else, this is, this is, we didn't do it, we're not gonna do it, it's not gonna be done today. And that's what's before us. And so if we don't want to take action on this, and we want to, once again, give an opportunity and put the city's weight behind it and say, "We would like Walmart to consider this, you know, we'll do this, would you consider doing this?"
Right.
And, and get a response, I think we need to give them a recommendation, so that they don't have to spend two hours hashing out the very same thing that we just did, or them trying to read and, and get up to speed on, on what we're asking them to consider.
Yeah.
I would point out, just for reference, the council has the ability to negotiate with Walmart on the approval of the final map. They still have the authority to approve or deny the final map, which is the end-all of this process. So, they can use the final map, which is the closure, if you will, to negotiate, if they choose to want to do that, the easement access or any other access that Walmart might be willing to grant them for the final map approval. So, this is not a good position to negotiate from, Jim, and I'll tell you why. You open the door both ways. Negotiation means that Walmart could come back and say, "Listen, you negotiated to pay us $2.3 million to do this work, please come up with it now." The city doesn't have 3.2.3 million dollars, I mean, dedicated to this at all. So, when you open negotiation, you're opening it both ways, when you start looking at these items. So, I'm very, I'm sorry, I work as a negotiator, so I'm very concerned about that, whereas the final map is a clean policy issue that the council can say, "Listen, we're not gonna approve the final map," if they wanted to do that, until you give the easement out, if they want to try to do that. Now, that's a, that's not the way you negotiate, but I'm just saying that's, there is a way to do that, so this isn't, this, these are, this-
The bottom line is, we are not in authority to, to even-
Even off-
Understand the negotiations or go, go through all that, so-
I'm just pointing, I was trying to point out to you, there's another tool the, the chat, council has, if they choose to want to proceed with the negotiation with Walmart on the easement asset.
It just seemed to me, if we've already removed a lot of the, the constraints, we're losing any ability to negotiate.
Well, but this, I don't, I don't picture this as a negotiation.
No, I, I agree.
It's not gonna be done.
That's right. And it's, and it's expense that they don't have to, and expense that they don't have to go through as well. But we don't understand how much that even is right now, we don't even know. So, I'm not sure, maybe there's no, no real negotiation power here at all, I don't know, we haven't really looked into it. And it's not for us to look into, it's for the City Council to look into. So, that's why I just want to give this to the City Council, so.
Mr. Chairman, the whole purpose of this was just to be, for me to be able to sign that final map. The council has to make that decision, whether they want to approve that final map or not. If, if we direct this back to the City Council, it still puts me in a position where I cannot, I cannot certify that map that all the conditions have been applied to. I seek that approval from the Planning Commission to be, then allow the map to go to the City Council for their ultimate review and approval, or whatever they may do. I still need to be able to say that this amended map and these conditions are approved by the Planning Commission to even allow me to sign that map, period.
Yes, Michael Maurer, City Council. It's my feeling that the City Council should be making the decision on the final map, that you guys should approve this thing tonight. You're just kicking it up to us to make the decision that you don't want to make, and then we're gonna have to make the decision, and it's still gonna have to be the final map. The city's negotiating with this, with Walmart. Walmart's spent a fortune, by the way. You know, if you look at all the drainage they put in, all the street improvements they put in besides their building, and the city did, did receive, I think I saw a check for $2.1 million, isn't that about what it was, Lauren?
Yes, for the plant check, for inspections, for processing the, the project.
So, it's not that they didn't spend a lot of money, and I, you know, and I think that, I have to agree with the city attorney, even though it's not gonna cost them any money to do the reciprocating agreement, it does affect their property. So, I think this is a decision, I, I think, I think the tentative, this, this should be approved tonight, and then the City Council can deal with this on final map.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Folghetter.
I would like to ask Mr. Pilkson, there was a comment made to, that I think is totally, absolutely incorrect, and that is that the City Council can make further negotiations and, before it approves the final map. The final map is not discretionary. The City Council has to approve it if it has met all the conditions that you guys have put on the map. Isn't that correct, council?
That is, that is correct. It is a ministerial act, and the approval of the final map is all about whether it conforms to the conditions.
So, there isn't gonna be another negotiation, okay? I, I don't disagree with the motion to, to send it up with no action, okay? But because the, the conditions haven't been changed, you're, you're sending it up to have them look at it, I, I think that's fine. But you can't do this where you approve this, and then there's another negotiation. It's done. It's a, they have to, the council has no discretion. The other thing I just want to say, one, one other thing, and council has been clear about this. The rule is whether this places an increased burden, isn't that right, council?
Well, you're changing the words a bit, but-
Okay, I, I don't want to do that, I'm not trying to do that. So, give me the exact words again.
That the modification, modifications do not impose any additional burden on the fee owners of the real property.
Okay, so the reciprocal easement does place a burden. I don't, I don't remember who said that, I agree with that. It's small, okay? But as a lawyer, I recognize it does. But that burden is far outweighed by the $2 million that you are going to be relieving them of in the change of the conditions. There would be no additional burden on them if you did that and required-
That's incorrect, sir.
How is that?
We're not relieving them of $2.3 million.
Whatever the number is.
Okay? That's, that's incorrect, so to, to present that to the public or to the commission is incorrect.
I apologize, I apologize. What is the number?
We owe them.
So, when they don't do these things, they don't save several million dollars, is that correct?
No.
That's not correct.
Not as I understand it, sir.
Well, that seems quite odd, if they don't have to do those things and they pay for half of them, that, that doesn't save them half the money, but I don't, I'm just dropping in tonight, but that makes no sense to me. So, anyway, my other point was, the final map is not the time to negotiate.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll close this public hearing. I'll listen to a motion on PC Resolution Number 17-15, Amendment of the tentative tract map 11-790, resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Richcrest approving amendment, amended tentative parcel map number 11790. Do I have a motion?
I'll keep my original motion.
Do I have a second? Restate your motion, sir.
I'd just like to send this item to the City Council for consideration.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, just a second. Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Abstain.
Commissioner Marjorie?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir, you've been so long.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to those that have been here. Moving on, we have a discussion item on the Arby's site, plan discussion. I know staff would like some direction and decision possibly tonight, so let's, let's take the time to pay attention to this.
Mr. Chairman, this is a discussion item, we are not looking for, again, we're looking for direction from the Planning Commission, staff is, we are, and we are considering whether or not to proceed forward with this site plan on a staff level, or whether to, frankly, whether to bring it back to Planning Commission. It is a extremely interesting project. This is a, for those of you who are not aware, this is the site plan for it. This is California and China Lake, this is the old, some of you may remember it as a Chinese restaurant, it was recently an Indian restaurant. It sits at the corner of, again, California and China Lake. Across the street is a jewelry store, down the street is the beverage, across China Lake is the beverage location, and further down is City Hall. So, it's right up the street. The, the owners, the proposed owners have, are looking at purchasing this property, it's a pre-standing building, and developing a new Arby's, Arby's location. The current location they wish to relocate out of, and they wish to acquire this property and re- and redevelop it into, and rehabilitate it into a new Arby's drive-through. You're looking at, the, the major considerations we have were the drive-through and the, and the circulation issue, and Lauren and I have discussed this a couple of times, we have some concerns with it. The initial plan that I, being a planner, on circulation came up with was to rotate the planning, the drive-through, going behind the building and out through China Lake, out to China Lake, much like, the only problem I had with that was that it would put the drive-through window on the passenger side of the car, which probably wouldn't work very well. So we, we changed the, the development team, changed the direction of the drive-through. Now, as you would see, entering, typically entering in from California Street, and going around through the parking lot, as you can see, the cars, they're going down and around, and then exiting through, with the drive-through window, in that orange section you can see on your screens, and then down and out the property, exiting out the property, off into California, essentially, out that way. So we would have no, we would pretty much have to have the closure, there's a driveways, the other problem with this property is it's just full of driveways. There's a driveway exit that's maybe six or eight feet from the center curb of China Lake and California. If you go to the property, take a look at it, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't believe we put an aerial on this one, but, because it's a discussion item, but basically, it has a driveway there. The same thing is true on the China Lake side of that corner, there's a driveway that's maybe six to eight feet from the curb, center of curb there. Both of those driveways present some tremendous traffic issues for our, our engineering department and planning department, because obviously, you got immediate access to an intersection, you know, you're, you're exiting and entering right in front of a right turn lane on both cases. So we would probably need to have those driveways closed off. The other problem is, the driveway here, there's another driveway essentially to the south end of the property, right here, where you see the drive-through going through, you see that car in angle, there's a driveway right, basically, at the end of the property here, that also, basically where those hash marks are, correct. And, and those are, and we can't really use that actress, exit, and I'm not sure we want to really use it as, you know, as an, we can't use it as an entrance to the drive-through because it would stack cars on the China Lake Boulevard that are waiting to get through this drive-through. So we can't have that happening either, so that has to be drive-through, that driveway has to be closed off, so there wouldn't be any, we wouldn't permit any driveways essentially on China Lake Boulevard, was what would happen on this property, you close off their exits to China Lake Boulevard. So it all, all the property load now has to go on to California. Now California, if you're coming, um, west, if you will, did I do that right, west, on California, heading towards City Hall, there's two, there is a driveway to the south side, I mean, to the eastern side of the, where you see the hash marks again, and that would be your main entryway. However, doing left turn right now is, I don't sure that there's a curb there, right Lauren, there's not a curb, but it's a, but it, it's a double, double yellow, so it's not really the best access, because again, it's pretty close to the, to the light again, it's normally what, maybe 200, 300 feet from the, from the light. So we, we are concerned with that, which would mean coming in right that way, and, and we don't know whether we're going to limit the left lane or not, I don't know that Lauren is determined whether he wants to put a, you know, a curb in there or not, or a left turn pocket or something to allow for that. So they're going to have some circulation issues. The other problem we have is the size of the building versus the parking spaces. If we go to double, double parking spaces, which we would require, the double line parking spaces and the spaces, we are concerned that they're going to be at the, pretty close to the margin of, of this building, size-wise, depending on how much of that building ends up being kitchen, and how much of that building ends up being sitting area. You know, we could end up with a parking, our parking requirement would make it difficult. The other thing is, we may lose to have to require these two end parking, these two spaces at the end to be eliminated for radius turning on that to get into the drive-through. And then the other one we might be looking at is eliminating two more down here relative to getting access out of the parking lot into that drive-through, or they'd have to improve the entire alleyway, and we generally don't try to use an alleyway as a exiting point, you know, onto a street. So we would try to make it so that they could access that driveway here. So basically, you might end up eliminating two or maybe even three of those spots down there to allow for that access, so it's going to make the parking tight. So it's, it's a, it's an interesting site. The city does not tell businesses they can't develop in that site, we just condition them, and if they, if the conditions are so onerous, frankly, then they won't build there. But we don't, we don't, the city doesn't make a condition that says, if it's zoned appropriately, you can't build a drive-through there. So we have to depend on our conditioning relative to public safety and other issues to meet the needs, and let the business try to come up with ways to mitigate those conditions that work for them. So I just don't want to, I want to point that out, because we've had, some of the staff have gone, well, I don't know about this project, but I think it's a, it is an interesting project. Arby's needs this, they need to move fairly quickly, that's the other problem. Their, their, their old location, their release is running up, so they're trying to move forward, trying to give you the business side of this, the real side of the business side of this issue. And so they're looking at locations, and this is the location they think best suits them, both economically and functionally, so we're trying to, the staff is, is, is trying to work through this to try to give them, get, make the project feasible for them, but still maintain the safety requirements and the public safety that we need, and meet our code requirements, so that's kind of where we are right now. And Lauren, you have anything else you want to add? Did I pretty much cover the traffic circulation issue, you got more things you'd like?
Yes, yes, Gary, that was very good, that does cover quite a lot of the concerns that engineering had. We did do a site, field survey of the site, and as a result of our survey, we did find that, of course, the driveway approaches do not comply to ADA, so we would require those driveway approaches to be removed and replaced with sidewalks rather than a drive approach. We also did measure sidewalks too, and we found that the existing sidewalks don't meet the ADA requirements for cross slope. So there were quite a few deficiencies in the site for the off-site improvements. When engineering first looked at this, we also found that the site plan that was presented was not dimensioned properly, and there were not enough sufficient dimensions in order to really evaluate such things as turning movements, radius requirements for some of the vehicles. So from staff's purview, it appears that there would be a potential for many variances that would have to be asked for in order to make this site work. For instance, the setback requirements where a parking space might be relative to a public access at the alleyway, there's a setback requirement there. There's a setback requirement for where the parking stall is relative to China Lake Boulevard. That is undimensioned and unknown, and appears that that would require variance. It just looked to us that circulation was the big issue, as well as the surrounding improvements not complying to ADA. We think the conditions would be very onerous to try to make this site work for this, for this particular project.
Thank you. I want to ask some questions here, this right across the street from the old Taco Bell, right?
Yes.
And they have an exit that goes on to China Lake Boulevard. There is no dedicated turn lane, is it a straight or a turn lane? I'm, I'm trying to figure out why we would require them to get an easement from Caltrans to adjust those two driveways, and either make them ADA or, or take them out completely.
Well, this isn't.
What part of this could be grandfathered, is where I'm asking.
Uh, no, the, the improvements that are there, as far as the driveways, are totally non-compliant to ADA.
And I understand they're non-compliant to ADA, but, but I'm, but I'm asking, that, when Taco Bell sold, and it, and it came into the, the new owner, okay, that driveway was not changed, that's not ADA either. So I'm asking, what part of this can be grandfathered so that they can move forward? I mean, for example, let me, let me give you some examples. Anybody driven that alley? It's awful. If they were required to pave that, that would be a benefit to the community, wouldn't it? That would widen their access to, to get on to California Street. I'm, I'm just wondering what we can do to work with them on this site, short of demolition and starting over, because it's an existing building. Right now, it's an empty building, that's kind of a blight. If, if they modernize it, similar to what the barn is doing down at the triangle or something, to modernize it, what can we do to work with them, because it seems to me like we worked with Splash across the street? Because their access off of China Lake and access off of, off of Richcrest Boulevard didn't change. Because I can come down China Lake and I can turn right into that parking lot, and I can go down California towards the city, and I can go into their parking lot. Nothing was required for them as far as ADA improvements to, to buy that property and, and install their business, and this is a recent change. So why is it that we're going to play hardball on this existing business?
It's my understanding that anytime that there's a permit that's issued, a building permit, that that automatically kicks in the, the evaluation of off-site improvements are going to be necessary.
The ADA?
Well, ADA, deterioration of existing walkways, or any of the off-site improvements are subject to removal and replacement if they don't comply to the current city standards. And that's, that's as an ordinance within the municipal code. The evaluation there is if the project, if the extent of those improvements are 50% or greater than the valuation of the, of the, of the project, then, then the improvements are required. So I can't speak to the, the, the beverage site or the car wash site, I can only recite what is current in terms of requirements of the municipal code as this project is presented before staff.
Well, I didn't see much structural change in the car wash, and so I certainly understand that. And, and I don't know how much change was done in Splash, but really, where I'm going with this is, if I have a list, that this is what we need to comply with, and, and I understand it, and I support that. But I am saying, do we have some wiggle room to where we can make this work for them, or do we basically just turn around to staff and say, hey, that site won't work for you?
Well, unfortunately, the conditions that are required don't always offer staff much in terms of latitude or our ability to revise or change ordinance requirements. Those are usually done by a variance, and that is done by a public hearing process through the city council.
But we can change those, right?
I believe the variance process ultimately has to go before a city council, as, if it's an ordinance item, that, that does have to go before city council.
Lloyd, are you still on the phone?
No, I guess not.
Okay, well, look, I, I look at this map, and, and you're, you're wanting it as a discussion item, and I'll turn it over to the commissioners, and I can see the tight arrangement, you know, where you're coming in, you're coming around and through, and, and I'm thinking if, if we conditioned them and required them to pave that, that alleyway, and, and we certainly don't want to, you know, encourage that, but to eliminate any other parking, because it's a tight, tight process as well, for the amount of parking that's available for the square footage that they're using, they're at best at a tight spot. So basically, you're bringing this for a discussion item, and you're saying, this doesn't work at this site. I'm asking, can we condition that by allowing the alleyway and the access in and off of California, and them eliminating those drives on China Lake Boulevard to be able to achieve their goal and still meet the spirit of the law that the city needs? Can we do that?
Well, it is possible, however, we would impose upon the applicant to provide us with a, a two-scale, fully-dimensioned site plan to be able to truly evaluate such things as turning radiuses and so forth. We found that the plot plan was seriously lacking in its ability to be truly evaluated for those aspects of, of circulation. But the issue of, of complying to those ordinance requirements would require a variance, and that staff just doesn't have that discretion to offer any, any changes to ordinance requirements.
Well, one of the other considerations that I'm looking at is, what is the property to the south of it?
I believe it's a jewelry store, or there's a packaged liquor store, I believe it is, I know that.
No, 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 that's, that's east.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the old DMV.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that the KFC?
I was looking at this as if this were north at the top of the joint, I'm sorry.
Could, could they not enter into an agreement with that property owner to have, have that kind of as joint shared line, similar to what Weiner Schnitzel and Carl's Jr. does, so that the turning radius in and out of the driveway and, and parking requirements could be shared? In, in that event, would that eliminate, I, I, I'm just looking at possibilities, I'm, I'm trying to make this work for them to, to comply with city regulations, because if you're concerned about this turning radius, if that property line wasn't there, if it was a common property line, I'm not saying a lot line adjustment, I'm just saying that they have the ability to, to cross over in that radius turn, if they have permission from the landowner, would that resolve any, any issues?
Possibly could for meeting the turning radius there, that's a, that's a possibility, yes. That would be up to the applicant to try to work out something with the joiner.
All right, so I'd, I'd like to see this happen, I'd like to see it happen in a, in a timely fashion, and I'm trying to see how we can help them down that road, but also benefit as the city, and, and I look at the alley easement, which is unmaintained and potholed and, and tore up, and, and wonder if that's not just a benefit to us, rather than eliminating two or three or four parking stalls, which puts them willfully under the required parking for their square footage.
I'd like to suggest, this is going to, because of the nature, it's going to have some sort of variance in it, so it, one of my first questions as a staff level is, can we do this on a staff level to spave time? Because obviously, planning, it's obvious we can't do that because of the needs of the variance involved. The other question I'm going to ask, and I will let you know, I'm going to ask the city attorney this question, is if possible, can the staff, when it does its, staff report or does its request for approval, conditions of, of approval, whether or not we can offer up those variances, if you will? In other words, we say, here's the code, here's the requirement, here's how we'd like, we're recommending you approve the change or the variance. Because the process we have now for variances is very time-consuming and expensive, that's the problem I have. I mean, it, it requires you go back to you, then it requires that it go, we have to charge a fee for it, then it requires we go to the planning commission, I mean, to the council, you know, for one variance at a time, or a whole. Gary, I'd like to see if we can, if the staff can come up with a way to put it, the variance into the motion as we go. In other words, we're saying, this is the, the code condition, and this is the variance that staff's recommending that you approve. So you do it all at once, it would mean, though, that we'd have to take this to council, as I understand it now, because of the variance nature, but we could do it all in one motion rather than picking it back and forth. I mean, this potentially could be four times to the council and planning commission by the time we were done, this is, this is silly. So I got to figure a way to do it differently.
Let's put it all together and put it as one motion to the city council, because I, I would like to see the well use of this building instead of just being an empty building in our community. And, and have the, put together so it's one time, staff puts it together, so that's, that's what I'm, my input. I'm going to turn the time now over to the commission, any other comments or recommendations?
Just a question to, to understand a little bit better, what exactly is the, the variance they're, they're considering?
Well, we would have, the staff, as it goes through, we were just talking about that, parking, for example, they're required to have a certain number of spots for parking.
Oh, okay.
We could, if we ended up doing. We could, if we ended up doing where we have to have the circulation, we have to cut out, so we're minimizing the number of parking.
That could, could be.
We might come in and say, the normal requirement for parking is 10 spaces, which is the, the staff condition of report. However, we recommend in this case that you vary that parking level down to eight spaces instead of 10, which would meet this plan. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we would say, here's the condition, here's the variance. We're asking you either to approve one or the other, we're recommending the variance, essentially.
Right.
So, so you're approving a variance before you've actually approved the condition in this case.
Gotcha.
But that's the legal question. Can I do that, you know, appropriately? But we, the key here is staff wants to get these things done. They want to approve them. I think that's the goal of the planning commission, is to see new development, see it happen. And we have a site that's frankly in, in pretty poor shape, and we have a developer who is willing to spend the money to make this site change to a nice one. We want to try to help them. Now, we've got the rules we have, and we want safety issues. So, for example, the parking issue is, is one issue that is less frankly, is more easily changed in my mind than saying, we're going to have a, you know, left turn into, into, off of China Lake, for example, that's a safety, traffic safety issue where somebody can really get hurt.
Yeah.
So, you know, those are the kinds of things we would be looking at.
Okay.
And that's what I'm, I'm just proposing we do that. If the planning commission would be, I'd like to do that.
I, I would recommend that we do that.
I agree with you.
I, I think you're in agreement there. I, I want to, I want to only caution staff with this. I think it's important that we look at safety, and we look at our regulations, but I don't, I would encourage you that you don't get this bogged down in the minutia. And, and we, I, I think that this can overall be a benefit to the community. So, you know, as a side note, we have a landlord that's kind of been overbearing. And so, anyway. Any other action that we need to take on that, so staff has direction on it? So we'll move on to nine commissioners' items and comments, committee reports. Anybody been to a committee meeting?
By the way, before we jump off, I just would have mentioned it. My, my planner mentioned to me that there's this second drawing I didn't show you. It's a little more detailed. That's the, one of the drawings. And one of the problems we're having that, that Lauren's talking about is that the dimensions aren't very clear on this, on this drawing yet, so.
Okay.
So that's it. I'm sorry. There's the aerial of it as well. I had more pictures on, I thought I did. Currently. See how tight that drive-through is going to be on the driveway on the front of the building?
Yeah.
But anyway.
Which is going to encroach on the easement portion, but.
Potentially.
Okay. Mr. Sanders, committee meetings?
Yeah. I'll report on the quality of life committee. We met August 1st. It's been a little while, but we discussed the progress of the interactive fountain or splash pad. Apparently, that's scheduled to start November 2nd. They reported on the success of the indoor playground for the summer. Apparently, it's been really well-used. So, let's see, we also talked, discussed the, about the Kerr McGee Ballpark improvements and the Upjohn Pearson project, the park projects. So basically, a lot of, lot of kind of updates from staff on where we're at on those things. Next meeting is going to be September 5th at 4:00 PM at Kerr McGee Center.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Yes?
I attended the economic development committee meeting. We discussed the ICSC show in Los Angeles, and we'll be attending again this year. Gary Parsons is attending. I'll be attending, and Lindsey Stevens from the city council, it sounds like. And we discussed a website, sort of a landing page for tourism and what's going on in Ridgecrest, where this website would basically link all these community groups, Chamber of Commerce, RECVB, and the city's website to one website. So, that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Cecil.
Solomon.
I attended CTR meeting. We discussed internet sales tags, and that's a continuation item. And then we talked about the public transport system. So we are going to talk about those two items in the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. I did not attend infrastructure. I was having a cancer treatment, and so I missed it. So I apologize. Any, any other information on that? I know that we have a meeting this Thursday.
Yeah.
And is that at the new time, Mr. Mauer? Is that at a new time?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Commissioner comments? Mr. Sanders?
I just have one comment. Well, two comments. I think this was a pretty productive meeting, and I'd like to thank everybody for that. I'd like also just to let everyone know with a heavy heart that we, we lost a former planning commission member to, a good, great member of this community, Scott Davis, passed away last week. His funeral was this morning, and we ask that you keep your thoughts and prayers for his family as they grieve through this time, so. But since some of you served with him, I'd like you to be aware of that and just keep them in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferris?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Cecil.
That's, that's news to me, so.
You didn't hear that?
I did not.
Wasn't it?
We will be in prayer for the Davis family.
Thank you.
I did not know that.
Just want everybody to remember Mayor Breeden in their prayers for her on upcoming surgery.
That's a good point. So my only comment is, I appreciate the work that everybody had done, staff, and that. I, I, I don't oppose the decision that we made tonight. However, I would encourage us, when we have hard, what we consider hard decisions, to make those hard decisions, rather than, than ask the council to do the same thing, do the same work over again. In this, in this case, truthfully, I'm not sure that we're going to end up with any other outcome than, than what was on the resolution. And, and I understand the point of view of the fall-getters and, and any of the adjacent properties around it. But I would encourage us as a commission, when we can, to try and make a decision to the best of our ability. If there is an opportunity, such as, as this might be, where they can condition that, then maybe we can do that, but it may be nothing more than another letter, which we already have done. And, and so it might be just another effort, or we've already done that. And that can be a determination from them, but I'd, I'd like to see the commission be willing to do the hard work. And I think we did here tonight, because I, I wanted to make sure, if nothing else, that the information was exhausted, that you had an opportunity to see all of it and where it fell. And, and I think we did that. So I appreciate your work tonight. And I appreciate those that attended and spoke this evening, and especially our staff. I appreciate Jessica coming and sitting here till 8:30 at night. And so, staff items? We're going to lose Gary.
Yes, that's a.
Three more weeks.
Main thing. Yes, I wanted to, just to comment, we are, a couple of points of interest, just a small point, this planning commission, in the last two year, year, I guess, last year, has approved more site plan reviews and done more actions than it had done in terms of site plan review in the last previous three years. So that's two things. One, you're working harder. Second is that we're getting more projects in, and we're having more discussion and more activity. So I think that's really a very important thing. We're moving into the action phase. We're not doing a lot of the big master plans. You guys worked on, on specific plans and downtown plans and Bowman plans and other kinds of plans in the past. And the last year, we've been working on site plan review, getting projects out the door, approved and done. And I do want to, staff wants to thank you all for that as well, as putting up with some of the, the process that we go through to get those done. I mean, as you can tell, positions change, people change their minds midstream even at a meeting. I want to do phase two instead of phase one, and this kind of thing. So staff's sort of trying to make it good, and you have tolerated our, our efforts and our, in our mistakes and our efforts to try to do things. Staff's not perfect, for sure. We just try to work hard to do as best job we can. The final thing I want to do is I want to make sure that, there are a couple of things. One is I want to make sure that I want to thank Heather and Paul, yeah, I actually know her name, Heather and Paul, and, and Lauren for his cooperation. This city has a very good working staff, and these guys work hard to get these things done. And I cannot pronounce her name, so that's a problem. I was going to introduce, I am scheduled to retire in 13 working days, not that I'm counting, but 13 working days. Got bad accents on the thing. I'm, I'm going, I'm going, I'm sorry that we were planned originally. My new replacement for my position started work yesterday. Unfortunately, she had a family thing she had to deal with today, last-minute kind of emergency, so she wasn't able to be here tonight. We had hoped to have her here to introduce, make the transition a little bit easier. Her name is, she will go by Penn. The reason I say that is when you see her name, you, I can't even pronounce it.
Ma'am?
It is one of those kinds of names that make us wonder who created the alphabet, because they used every letter in it. But it's, she goes by the name of Penn, and it makes it easy, like the writing pen. And she will be at your next planning commission meeting. She will be the chair, the secretary, acting secretary of that. And like I said, I will be retiring. I appreciate the opportunity to have been able to work with all of you. Some of you I've worked with longer down at the end of the table in different positions over time, and in some very controversial issues. And we've, we've always, we've always been able to go home and have, you know, in my case, coffee, maybe not so much in your case. But, and be able to do that. So I want to thank all of you very much for the opportunity to be able to work with you and be able to be a part of the community. I think over my 17 years being in the city now, we've accomplished quite a bit, including that silly Walmart at the corner that's 15 years old. Some of you may not remember the, some of the initial comments on that project. There was the turnaround, that turnabout, roundabout process. There was the park down Bowman Wash. There was fencing, decorative fencing with lighting and all kinds of stuff on Bowman. There was running the channel all the way out to Meere Lake. There was a whole bunch of project proposals for that project over the years. And we, we, we were through that, organized them, figured out how to go, spent most of the money, all the money that the city had for that project. And we got it, I think we got a good store out of it. It seems, the public seems to be very happy with it. But we've also added, over my time in, in the last years, almost 55 new retail centers. Now, some of them have been replaced and gone out of business and replacement, some of them relocations of existing business. The 55, which is, which is a great, great, great achievement, and a lot of that was achieved by you guys working on it too. So I want to thank you all personally and appreciate it. I will still be in town. Yes, I've been asked that question for a while, at least for a year, I promise that, because I have to do that, because Penn has made me promise to be able to pick up the cell phone and say, what the heck did you do there? So, and where's that file? So, but I do appreciate it very much, and thank you all. And with that, I will say, that's all the comments we have. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we will close the regular session of the planning commission at 8:30.
And Heather, you.